Good morning, everyone. This is a continuation of the meeting from Tuesday, the 25th. Our budget meeting. So, well, meeting is now in session. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, ma'am. And just to let everybody know, Councilman Martin will be joining us in a few moments. So, we've got a few things to go over today. First thing, we've changed out your books in front of you. All the new pages are in there. Your old information is in a clamp right there beside you that you can take with you. And the other books you can take with you today as well. Basically, in front of you, we've been listening to the comments, questions and concerns from council, reviewed with the staff, and we've made the changes within the budget. We basically have a budget in front of you currently that's balanced at a 15 cent ad valorem tax rate and a 5 cent sand tax rate. That's what's in front of you currently. With that, there's been a few discussions about some general fund items we'll go over this morning. Put a hand out there beside you. It's got a staple in the top of it. The additional personnel cost, that was one of the questions that came in. So, we show this every year, the people that we're adding to see the cost of what we are adding. Administration, the Assistant Town Manager, Police Department, one full-time police officer, Fire Department, two part-time fire equipment operators, Public Works, the Automotive Service Assistant, and Recreation Department, a permanent part-time recreation assistant for a total dollar amount in the general fund of $238,855. Then you get to the Enterprise Fund. There's only one position being asked for this year, and it's in Stormwater, the Plan Review and Inspector. And you can see the total for the Enterprise Fund is $58,871. If you turn to page two, yours may be blank. I gave you some room to write on. So, you get to, we talked about putting the funds in there, reclassifications. And what this is in the wastewater department is basically there are six individuals that are working currently, and we like to split this out into two crews. One crew would be working on the vacuum system, then the other crew would be working on the vac stations and the lift stations. So, it would be separating it out. So, basically, when you look through that, all there was moving some people around within the department. And you see what the cost is there. The total cost to doing these is $4,555. But that would give him two different crews, two different crew leaders, then two collection system mechanics, then two utility maintenance mechanics. There'd be one branch or one level on each shift. Then if you turn to the next page, we talk about the Fire Department. The Fire Department, as you can see, we're changing some names, basically, and a few of the job descriptions within. And once we get the job descriptions finalized, then that'll become part of the personnel So, what you see there is we changed the basic firefighter, basic, or fire equipment operator would become firefighter. That was hard terminology right there. Fire Equipment Operator, EMTI, would be changed to a Master Firefighter. If you recall, we did the Master Police Officer last year's budget to give them a chain for progression. Then you see in the other one, Fire Equipment, a paramedic. We no longer have the paramedic level, but that would be the engineer, which then becomes the person that operates the trucks and maintains the pumps and those kind of things as the fires being fought. So, as you look down, there'd be no change for six employees. Three employees eventually would move to Master Firefighter, and then six employees eventually would move to engineer. This doesn't all happen on July 1st. This is a procession over probably a three-year period because the classifications, the Master of Police Officer, we tied that into years of service with the Town of Oak Island. So, these will be tied into years of service with Town of Oak Island for the Fire Department as well. So, the number that you see, the 32,808, is a number for futuristic as well. It's not all happening July 1st, just to let you know. But this does show you what will be happening over the years within this department. And the reason why you see a 10% increase, they would first move to one step, and then they would move to another step years later. That's why eventually it would be a 10% increase to get to that point. As the way the personnel policy reads right now, if they left the bottom classification in grade 19, and they moved to a 21, they would either move to the lowest, in the lowest, they would take the highest number, either the 5% increase or the bottom of the pay grade, whichever was greater. But they should not move straight to the engineer.
Is this also the one that's based on certifications and training?
Yes, ma'am. It has a list of requirements, just the same thing in law enforcement.
Right.
They had to maintain certain certifications for duration of a time, and then also be a town employee for a duration of time. But just want to remind, that's not $32,000 this year. The next thing you go to, we had discussions at the last meeting, this gives you a breakout of the vehicles and fleet that we're purchasing, so you can see what each department is getting. We have this in there numerous towns within the department. But you see Ford Explorer, the Durango's, the fire engine pickup trucks. We changed the admin to the Ford Ranger instead of the Ford F-150, the mini bus for the rec center or community center. All those are listed on the page for your convenience to see exactly what we have. Then you see the Enterprise Fund is broken out for vehicles as well. And then, not to give you too much additional information, if you turn the next page, that's the three-year capital plan that we go over every year incorporating to the budget. That where these numbers came from is out of these numbers. Just trying to make the other sheet easier for you to follow along. And that's your three-year capital plan spreadsheet showing the dollars for fleet, equipment, and improvement over the next three-year period. Yes, sir?
Are we entertaining questions?
I'm open to questions anytime you want to start asking.
Such openness. This is encouraging. We should transport this to Washington. What percentage of the personnel requests did you deny? We know what you approved.
So, what was submitted the first time was two additional police officers, full-time. We eliminated one of those. And then, as you remember, the Fire Department, he brought in three additional, full-time. And we looked at what we could do this year and the growth that we had, and the staffing level that we could still maintain, and bringing the two part-time people on for, to assist for the summer beach program. So, those were left out of the budget.
What I'm driving at is the larger picture. So, we're, back of the envelope math, we're sitting at just short of $300,000 worth of additional personnel.
Yes.
That's clearly not everything the department's asked for.
No.
And I'm trying to look at the projection going forward for the next two or three years where we're going to, barring a recession, we're going to continue to see growth. So, this is the minimum number going forward. We're likely to see continued requests around this number or higher. Would that be a fair statement?
So, what's been presented to you in the past when we were talking about the development on the mainland?
Right.
Those numbers, as you know, we've talked about the timeframe that we need to put those off. Fire and police look to those, and that's what we discussed this year during the budget. And so, those will need to grow three, five years out, whatever that window is. As far as the Public Works, Recreation, Admin, and those, there is nothing set in next year or the year after that to add additional staff.
Okay. And so, one of the things that we did talk about as a council in conjunction with you and your vision and Mr. Hatton's vision is that we need to continue to sharpen our long-term planning because clearly we have anticipated costs, and they're going to be ongoing. And just while we're talking about that and looking at the capital plan in '25, '26, we're looking at another fire engine, and year over year, another $300,000 request from police for vehicles. So, we're almost at $2 million just for two departments in '26.
Yes, sir.
So, again, I'm not concerned per se about this budget, which I think is approaching true neutral and which maintains all services and actually has a slight increase. But down the road, I see a need to provide additional services, which are going to be quite costly. I want to make sure that we plan for it. That's, is that a fair?
Yes, sir. I understand.
Is that a fair characterization of where we are?
It is. So, where we're at, so what we try to do is look at the three-year projection in both of those departments and really in all departments. So, we laid out a plan going forward for the police cars. So, every year, you're going to see three. So, that'll be a constant in that budget going forward. The fire truck, the way we explain it to you, the, in '25, '26, that'll be the latter truck if the development of the Williams track's going. So, that may be put off another year as well. But those are the things that we're trying to work within the budget to make sure that as we go forward, those are items already maintained in the current tax rate that we have, so we're not hitting the tax dollars in the future.
Right. And I would say that when we finish this process and we turn into the next council retreat, I know Councilman Martin, it's something that he promoted, and I agree with it, that we should have a separate budget retreat, and we should look at our forecast and adjust it. Because the forecast going forward is going to be potentially a lot of expenses for equipment, personnel, as we move, as the mainland develops, and as we relocate services out there.
Yes, sir.
That would be fair, right? One last thing. So, I asked about the internal, I'll call it the internal mobility program or the internal incentive program. And so, the way I add these numbers, that's at a cost of about $38,000. Is that fair?
It is. But the one for the Fire Department, like I said, that's over the next, at least two years. So, that, I just wanted to show you what the total number was.
I support the concept. I needed to see the number. Now, I have the number.
Yes, sir.
I'm happy.
Okay.
Thank you.
The estimate for the Pierce engine for this upcoming fiscal year is higher than what we just recently purchased one for.
Correct.
Are we, did we just get an amazing deal for the current engine because of supply chain availability? Or why do we expect an increase in price?
Some reason.
I'm assuming the apparatus will be outfitted the same way.
It's almost the exact same.
Yeah.
We were buying one that was on the assembly line.
Right.
That was already scheduled to be built. But it would, I don't think it ended up being the eight. I don't think so. That came in the middle of the year. I'll have to get you the dollar amount here in a minute. When we get a break, I'll go get the P.O. for you. We'll get, I'll get that number when we go on the break or whatever, so we can get the exact number, so I can, I don't have that. But it was a slight increase, about almost 2%.
And then, as you already noted, that ladder truck could be pushed out to future years.
Could be.
And then, as you check on the Enterprise, this is the year we started to try to show you improvements. And there was a big number we talked about during the retreat. So, you'll start to see in Water and Wastewater, some large numbers, a second water, excuse me, a fourth water tower. So, some of those numbers, we started to build into the budget going forward, so we can see what those numbers are. And on the Enterprise Funds, we've looked at those growths and those rates and tried to project something going forward to make sure it's not a shell shock in those years.
What's our fund balance look like for the Enterprise account?
Mr. Hatton has the, he don't let me have the balance.
I was just curious, like, what, the total three-year outlay is that, you know, 10% of the fund balance that's sitting there today, or 5% or 20% or?
I'd have to total them all up and look. I don't have that in front of me. We'll get that. That's not a problem.
No. Right. Because I don't want, I don't want people to get the impression that we're going to have to increase fees in these Enterprise accounts in order to cover, you know, $8.6 million. We know we've got.
Well, each fund has their own.
Right.
When you're looking at, so when you're looking at the Water Fund, a lot of that can come out of fund balance.
Right.
Yes, on Water.
That's why you've got.
And wastewater also should be able to cover it. Stormwater, that's real close.
Yeah. So, the Stormwater improvements, the ones that you see laid out are the ones that we, or council approved two years ago on Ocean Drive. And we looked at using the ARP funds for those. So, that's a possibility or whatever council chose to do at that time. The fund balances should take 80 to 90% of the cost.
Does the fire fee offset Fire Department equipment?
The fire fee this year went up $11,000 some dollars. It doesn't offset everything. There's a balance there that you transfer over, I mean, you transfer funds from the fire fees into it, but it does not cover the total expenses. There's one thing that we can look at going forward is separating from the county and just doing a fire tax instead of a fire fee. They would probably still collect it for us, but we would then in-house be able to look at, do you want to have the capital in that tax, or do you want the capital in general fund? And that would be the decision council would make at that time. And then you look and say, chief, you've got a budget of $1 million. You know, this is what you generate. And then you start looking inside that to see what can be done. That's something council can address at the retreat next year. Our fire fees is maxed this year. So, those were some of the questions that had come up. Tried to give you that information so you could see what was going on and how we were looking at that going forward. But the positions for the Police and Fire Department were put off until the development on the mainland. Other items we're going to talk about, market adjustment. We discussed this a little bit the other day. We talked to the other municipalities around us. They were averaging 5% to 7% on COLA and 5% and 3% on merits. The merit, we are holding at 3%, which basically comes to an average of about 2.7 merit going forward. And then also, we were looking at COLA. We don't look at COLA. The last year, we've done market adjustments, and we're looking at recommending market adjustment this year. We're not following in everybody else's footsteps. We never have. So, COLA, to me, is not a fair thing for the top salary person to be able to get the same percentage as the lower salary person. So, me and hadn't worked on a, excuse me, a sliding scale, where the higher salary person gets the less amount, and the lower salary people actually bring in the dollars. So, that's in there, and it came to about equivalent of a 5%. So, that's where we left ours at the bottom of what everybody else is looking at. But we are doing a true market adjustment, not across the board. Pay grades, we're looking at the 2.5% increase on all pay grades. Pay grades does not mean staff's getting that 2.5%. That gives us into a hiring range of everybody else has been increasing their pay grades to be able to bring in on the market, to make sure that we can fill the positions and be competitive with other people. But that does not mean that Mr. Martin goes up 2.5% when you raise the pay grade. Mr. Martin's salary is already established. It's the new hire. And we have to look at that to make sure that, you know, we don't do something that's going to make somebody be underpaid when the new person comes in. So, that's why I say the 2.5% works for us, because if we went any higher, we could possibly put people, new hires would be making more than a person who's been there a year.
That was going to be my question. It's not going to be detrimental to the employees who have served us well for.
No, ma'am. We take that into consideration. We make a recommendation. And then, the benefits, there was a slight increase in markets on those kind of things. Vision went up a few pennies. Dental went up a few pennies. Healthcare, really, about $17 or something like that. There was no big number this year.
Not bad.
There was no, nothing's hit big on those.
I expected it to be much higher before it came in.
That's not bad at all.
The advantage of being in that pool.
So, that's basically what's in the general fund. We're going to go over some other things. I'm just trying to get caught up to where we talked about so far. Now, on the Enterprise Funds, basically, we just looked through the same things. We showed you the additional staffing, showed you the capital items, and then Mr. Hatton can talk about the ARP funds, because that is in the Enterprise Fund this year, a transfer.
Do you have discussion of the DOSHER tax on your radar?
That's for, that would be y'all's discussion, talk about DOSHER tax. I don't, I don't collect it or bill it, so.
No, but we pay it.
But you do, but, yes.
So, before we leave the, again, to go to the 30,000-foot level, right? Personnel cost is a huge driver. It's probably the largest driver in the budget ultimately. And so, we have salary, we have a COLA adjustment, and then we have merit. And if, I'm going to say this, as worthy as our staff is, with the inflation numbers that were used last year and the numbers that still remain, we're going to need to take a hard look at this, because if we run year over year over year at 8% to 10%, we're going to be doing one of two things, reducing staff, raising taxes. I mean, those numbers are really not going to be sustainable long term. Again, I'm thinking long term. I'm very concerned about that. I think we're okay this year, but if this continues, I think those, those numbers are not going to work. They're going to stress our budget. So, at some point, again, I'll schedule it for the fall. In the financial retreat, we really need to take a look at personnel costs and how we're looking at that and what ways we can shape them so we can, I want our salary structure to be competitive. I want our employees to be satisfied, but I don't want to go bankrupt either. So, you know, we need to hit a, we need to find a balance point there. And that, I think that's worthy of serious discussion on a long-term basis.
Oh, we agree with that. And that's why we've been looking at the market adjustments to try to maintain some kind of bottom line on this instead of a heavy line.
Flat, instead of a flat COLA. I like that.
As you recall, last year, we did the one-time supplement check, so it wouldn't go into the base and carry forward. Yeah, that was true. That lowered the base cost. Right. But we still have employees. But I still think we need to take a long-term look at this. Inflation is still persistent in the economy, and interest rates are going to go up again. We're still teetering on the brink. And if we run extremely high personnel costs, that's a problem. And then, on the other side, as Councilwoman Bell said, if we don't remain competitive, that's a problem. So, we have to sort of thread the needle on this, and that's why I want to have more discussion in the fall.
Just keep in mind that the inflation cost and the interest rate cost are also affecting our personnel.
Yeah, everyone, agreed.
Well, the 5% this year is sort of the average. It came to a total, excuse me, $378,845 is what that was. So, you divide that by the 5, and I think it's $76,000 per percent across the 151 employees.
But this year, we're at 5%. Last year, to catch back up and to bring ourselves up to par, we were more like 9%, weren't we?
Yeah, with 7%.
Definitely.
So, what we did is we broke our 7% down, because we didn't follow everybody. Everybody, the other markets gave their employees a true 7% raise. Other departments and other municipalities don't have the 151 employees. So, we have to look at other measures to be able to try to make sure that we can take care of them, but we also have to look at the tax base as well. And that's why we looked at last year, cutting that in half to take half of it off the tax dollar and put the other half in the tax dollar.
And of the towns that were surveyed in the area that David spoke to, none of them are doing the COLA like we're doing it. They're all flat, no matter what you get paid.
I like the market adjustment better.
We do, too.
That way, you're not giving a COLA to someone who is already above market.
Exactly.
I like that.
Well, and I think the other thing we've done historically is we try to consistently, year over year, reward our employees where other municipalities may take a short year, you know, do something significantly small, and then they find themselves the year or two later having to do something significantly larger in terms of playing catch-up. So, I think that is one thing that we've done to avoid having to play catch-up, is we've consistently rewarded people year over year. So, I think we remain competitive that way.
We are.
And then, just to add on to what Councilmember Bock mentioned about if our year-over-year growth rate suddenly becomes 8% or even 10%, I just want to remind everyone that a key component that helps us not only stay ahead of that, but at least keep up with it, is a strong, healthy tax base. So, our tax base needs to remain not only where it is today, but with the expected growth in the tax base. And I think that's what enables us to even consider something that would remotely look like, you know, revenue neutral this year is because of our tax base, right? If our tax base was shrinking or eroding, this becomes even increasingly more difficult year over year. But we're fortunate that our tax base has remained healthy and is stable, right?
Is that growing at a 5% to 8% rate, the tax base?
Our increase over the last three years, I think, was about 3.26, something like that.
And one other thought, we have been pretty good about not adding, not saying yes to every request for new positions.
No.
We try to say yes as often as we can, but we haven't always said yes.
Yeah, that's why some of them are part-time to make up the difference. The other thing in the Enterprise Funds, there was no sewer, water, or sewer district fee increases this year. But as you know, we did add the increase, or we recommended the increase for solid waste at $3.50 for the yard debris pickup. And that's the only change that we are bringing forward. And then, as you know, at the budget meeting, adoption meeting, we'll talk about fee schedule. There are some fees that'll be changing in the building, in the building department, Stormwater Department, and maybe zoning, but those are the only small changes we're looking at. maybe zoning, but those are the only small changes we're looking at. Then we have funds to review today, if there's no other questions about those.
Good job.
That's your old stuff, and your new book's loaded with a new one. So if you'll turn your tab to Fund Forty-Six. Let me just give you, forty-five first.
Revenue?
It is a blue tab, that helps you any.
Where, tell me again where you are.
We're going to forty-five.
About halfway through.
I'm sorry, it's not blue. It is yellow.
Yeah, it's yellow.
It's yellow, sorry.
What was that?
I went to forty-six.
Yellow and blue.
Yeah.
Hatton's gonna talk for a while.
Colorblind.
No, I was jumping ahead.
What's the number?
Forty-five, yellow pad.
Accommodations.
It's yellow, it's not blue.
Accommodation.
All right.
He had a way, man, hang there.
Thank you.
All right, Charlie.
Fund Forty-Five, accommodations tax, as you'll recall, this is the three percent piece of accommodations. And for, you can see there on the sheet that you have in front of you, we're looking at a two percent increase in what we budgeted last year for accommodations tax. When you see our estimated revenue, yeah, we don't know, you know, it's remained strong over the last few years and hopefully remains strong. So, you know, bringing it up two percent, we thought was a, a good number. And if it is higher and there's not a recession or hurricane, you know, then we should be able to go over that number like we did this year. But again, this was, you know, when we have a hurricane, it hurts the accommodations tax. So we were fortunate this year not to have one, and you see, you know, the results that we're getting.
I need one more year of none.
Of none, exactly.
None.
Be nice.
What do the penalties represent?
It's people that, I mean, if they pay it late, you know, if they send it in late, they bill them downstairs for it.
And they're going down?
The penalties.
Is that from not having enough time to pursue that?
I think it's education, the penalty part of it. In prior years, we've had some penalties where it was a little bit higher than this. As you recall, you know, we've tried to educate people over the last three or four years.
What's your confidence level percent-wise in what we're able to collect?
Versus what it really is?
You don't think we're missing much?
I wanna place over ninety-something, well, with hope. And as I've told you before, quite often in the last couple of years, we have found that people will turn other people in. We had a lot of that. So, you know, they say, I've been paying mine for years, my next-door neighbor, who knows rents, they need to pay their piece too.
So then what happens when we learn about that?
That's when we'll bill them. Find out, you know, what they, they'll send a letter from downstairs, the collection area, and say, you gotta pay.
That pretty much takes care of it.
And bill the majority of the people that do that, believe it or not, a lot of them say, I didn't know I had to pay it. And they may just say that. And they'll, they'll offer to pay the prior years. We've had that also.
So how do we know what their income is?
Pure faith, you know, we gotta, we can't go in and audit them. And we're, you know, the, the, the big companies on the island, you know, we trust them, hopefully, you know.
And the big companies are the ones that rent the fifteen, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar rentals?
Yes, sir.
And they, as far as we know, they're playing by the.
Right.
So the ones that play games, it might be that one or two Airbnb or whatever.
Yeah.
And hopefully, we find them as we find them.
And, uh, and see on the revenue, I mean, on the, most of the money that we bring in on this is transferred over to the beach tax fund, the forty-seven fund. So, you know, this money, once we spend the money on tourist-related items, then I will send the, most of the rest of the funds over to forty-seven to supplement that fund. Okay, forty-six, this is the two percent of accommodation, which is beach tax fund. I took that one up, as you also see, our estimated revenue is higher than what we budgeted from one, you know, we budgeted one-five. The upcoming year, we budgeted one million, five-thirty, or again, another two percent increase. Again, lacking hurricanes and recession, what have you, you know, we hopefully will get in over that amount of money. And in this fund, we'll spend money on items like dune maintenance and that sort of thing. And anything that I have left over in this fund goes to Fund Forty-Seven, the beach nourishment fund. So it's, all those funds are just transferred over to that.
Where does, um, the parking lots and such go?
That now is going to be in the paid parking fund.
Okay.
Which used to be, it used to be in forty-five.
In forty-five, okay.
Any update from parking funds?
Sorry?
Yes, so we did start getting the information. Uh, he's got part of the dashboard working. Year-to-date, a week ago, our revenue driven has been right about two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand and some change. Uh, we'll start giving you a month report on that when we do our meetings. And you'll start to see the number of spots, the violations, or the tickets and those kind of things, and what the collection was.
Thank you. Two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, was that because a lot of people were buying decals, or is that because a lot of people were paying to park?
Uh, that, remember, you had to have first.
Annual passes.
Hundred, hundred, or first thousand passes that you sold. That was a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, I believe, or something like that.
Yeah.
Big chunk of.
Yeah.
So we don't, we have preliminary numbers, but it would be hard to, to make a projection because it's still so new, and we've had terrible weekend weather, so, and we're not at the peak yet. But safe to say, we're gonna approach seven or eight hundred thousand minimally if what Otto said to us in the conceptual phase is true.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna get, we have a paid parking budget now, so we'll, we'll get to that one here in just a minute.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause April's been a terrible month.
It has.
Weather-wise, it's been.
No barometer.
Weird.
Yeah, I wouldn't be guided by April, you're right.
Memorial Weekend and the Fourth of July will be our big, it'll tell us what it's really gonna do.
It'd be the indicator.
Yes, it will be. All right. Beach, go to beach nourishment forty-seven, that's right in behind those two accommodations. And at the top, you can see what the Avalorum five cents gets you. We estimated one, uh, our budget of one million, seven fifteen, we're estimating one million, seven-five-two, so we're real close to that. And with the five percent for the upcoming year, we're looking at three million, two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand that will go to this fund. There's, we anticipate we'll have no grants this year like we've had in the past. Of course, we're always still looking to take care of engineering or anything else we can to offset taxpayer cost. So if you go down to transfers, you'll see the number, that three million, four-fourteen, that I just discussed in forty-five and forty-six, and the two accommodation funds. It's the money that will come to there for future beach nourishment. Also, you know, if like we need an emergency dune or something like that, a small project that needs to be taken care of, I would, of course, use it out of this fund. This fund pays for, you know, the engineering fees that we have now for the future projects, and also for, for example, federal beach project, we're budgeting for that number, and that's a three-year number, the number you see there was for the next three years. Engineering, you know, I have not actually got the actual quote in from Moffitt and Nickel, but I'm estimating the number that you see there, the million dollars. Lockwood folly, we know we have to pay that, that's our, our piece of, keeping the Lockwood folly open. Yeah, that's what I said. Federal beach project, that's the five hundred thousand, that's something new. And that is the, what we have to pay for the next three years to, towards an engineered beach. Toward a federal beach, or federal breach, federal.
Special obligation bond, uh, was ten million, now zero, what was paid on?
That is the money that we did on the special obligation to cover, you know, because FEMA takes so long to pass.
That you explained earlier, yeah.
So we're paying that, and again, FEMA is getting slower, I believe.
FEMA's FEMA. And you put in a, a one thousand for parking dune citations, that's because it's an unknown at this time?
Those would be the collections from our, uh, police department type deal. So, any questions you wanna do? Paid parking is our new fund, it's Fund Fifty. And we see from the reports that we've gotten in so far that we will be able to break down the revenues between parking revenue and parking violations. So if anybody ever asks when, we're in the process of doing this, when it gets up and really going, we'll be able to see the violations versus what people are paying.
And a month from now, you'll have true number of some sort.
Better number, exactly, as we see another report, 'cause.
I didn't mean to say true number. More up to date.
Right, exactly. We got a three-week, three-week number right here.
Yeah, yeah.
So while we're on that subject, I realize this is an estimate, and knowing Mr. Hatton, this is probably a mid-line estimate, right? Right down the middle of the road, and likely to be more, I think. Where are we with identifying additional parking spaces?
So we've been identifying those the whole time, as we go. I've asked Scott to do a new number, uh, and he's gonna have it for us, uh, so I can send out probably the first of the week. Uh, we've already added probably another seventy to ninety town decal spots through the town, and, and he's getting that number. But he should have a whole number for us. He's saying he's probably added probably another a hundred and forty to a hundred and seventy parking spots so far.
Yeah, we're over fifteen hundred, possibly.
Oh, yes, we're close to that number. Yeah, I don't wanna put a number out there, but we're close to that. So, and that will continue to grow through the season, 'cause that's what the instructions we got was, every time we can find a spot, we're adding a spot.
That's a common sense approach here because we needed to launch.
Correct.
And we knew the launch would be messy, which it has been. Anybody's done any kind of program rollout, you know, you're gonna hit some bumps. We did. I think the idea that you're gonna go forward and identify spaces as you find them, at the end of the year, we'll be close to maximizing it for year two. I mean, to try to do it all at once invites more problems. So I'm pleased to hear you say that, that you're continuing to identify spaces, both for residents and also non-residents.
I'd say about July first, we'll, we probably won't be able to put any extras in until after the season, but up until then, we'll be trying to iden- identify and get something in.
So the administration is saying you have fulfilled council's request to find.
Getting closer. I don't, I don't wanna say the exact number right this minute, but I'll let you know next week.
Just, I'm hearing motion, this is good, right? Yeah, okay.
The property, the property across from Eight-O-One Center, is that now paid parking, or are we still waiting for that to become paid parking?
Uh, we have asked the property owner a few questions and waiting on the response. And then if we do not get that piece of property, then we will put the ninety-degree parking along the roadway.
In the meantime, is that right-of-way violation parking?
If it doesn't have a bumper.
Are they ticketing, do you know?
I can't tell you exactly where they're ticketing. That's why we asked for the, all I see is a number that's not identified.
Will you get that broken down by zones?
The tickets.
Well, any of the revenue, will it be broken down by zones?
Parking revenue is by zones for every lot, it has a zone number.
Right.
When they're writing tickets, all it says is off, off parking. So that is any right-of-way within town.
Okay.
As we asked if he could identify that, he's, he said, I'm not gonna duplicate a parking area for a non-parking area for every street. So that's something we can look at in the future, but not this year.
Right, not this year.
And are you satisfied with the staffing level from Otto?
Right this moment, he knows he still needs more people for the season.
Yeah, once we hit peak, he does not appear to be fully staffed.
Yes, sir. He's working toward it, and he's training one and two here and there, but he has not.
Okay, well, he's been a little late with the data, please encourage him to ramp up his staffing, 'cause that, that will be critical. Walking on the beach, coming out different accident, I see the tickets, so they are writing tickets. But we're yet to have the surge, so they'll need more manpower.
Now, he said he, his goal is to be fully staffed, eighth, whatever the Monday is, the next one after the eighth, thirteenth, no.
Middle of the month.
Fifteenth, something like that.
What's that target number? He's been shy to.
We had one number that we told him, but his contract didn't have to tell us, so.
What's our number?
Well, we said he needed to have seven to nine, but, um, I don't know what he's gonna have.
Okay.
'Cause we don't get to see that number.
He's making a concerted effort to hire people here on Oak Island.
Well, that's good.
They're familiar with the island.
Yeah, downstairs has got people at it every day, some happy, some sad. And, and so we're trying to filter everything we can through them downstairs. When they're at lunch, the ladies have the windows catch it, but when they come back, then, then they get to take care of the parking permits.
Interestingly, I arrived early today, I thought, I probably should confirm I'm actually in the system, even though I registered this year because I had a change in vehicle. And I had the opportunity to observe three transactions in front of me, and they were polite. The lady, the auto lady seems to be very efficient, and a couple of clicks, and people were either in the system or not, or were buying something. So I think that appears to be going pretty smoothly, and it only took one click to verify me, but that was good, so, it's working.
So we, we had a lot of data that we tried to transfer. And so we were hoping we could transfer ninety, ninety-five percent and be accurate. It wasn't able to go that way, because not everybody had updated their tags or updated their cars or those kind of things. So what he's done in the first few weeks, he, he's reading a tag, and then he looks to see if they're parked in one of those spots, to see if they have the sticker, and then they are making the changes and pulling that person up, bringing their account over. But he's gonna have to stop doing that soon, 'cause he's not gonna have the time to be able to do all that. So we probably, instead of getting ninety, we probably got seventy percent, seventy, seventy-five percent of transfer. Uh, so there is a lot, and I mean, when you're talking ten thousand of them, there is a lot for them to.
And you got human error when you're entering.
And we do.
I mean, that's just normal.
And when they, sometimes they transpose it when they're looking at the tag, writing the ticket. So nobody's a hundred percent like that.
Correct.
Uh, but going forward, we're writing down these things as we're going forward. We like to have the registration on vehicles next year, so we make sure everything's registered, not selling your other three stickers or things like that to people. So those are the things that we need to improve on going forward.
It's a ramp up.
It's been a learning curve.
Oh, sure.
But we're getting there.
I mean, us, yeah, we're getting there. We keep him updated from downstairs with the, in the utility. We keep him updated from downstairs with the, in the utility department. As we have customers sign up or go away, he's, we are sending him that report. You know, it doesn't have personal information on it. It's just an account number with their name and their address and that sort of thing before it goes to him.
Keep on going, Hatton.
Okay, ARP. As we discussed last week, I believe, with the stormwater department, we're going to move money in our budget. You can see that we are right now going to transfer $610,000 from the ARP fund to stormwater for the Ocean Drive project, to supplement that project. That said, we will still have funds in ARP that we could, as Mr. Kelly said, that project will, and other stormwater projects will go over the 610. So we should be able to use additional funding from the ARP fund to help with the stormwater department, which I would prefer to do versus having to raise stormwater rates again. We have those funds available.
Because you have a project now that's getting ready to start that will go back and hit this fund when Mr. Hatton does the transfer for the capital project. So a balance of roughly 700, 750,000 is what's going to be left in there after Phase One project actually hits the count.
Is that 801 to Crowell Street? Is that-
Those are the two projects. 801 was the first project, Crowell Street's your second project. And then after those two hit, and then the police items you bought last year, the balance would be 750, 800,000 roughly.
Is that, Dixon has been slow to get that started, or?
Well, so when, we had to re-advertise, we only had one bid. And then the alternative bid came in. It was underneath the engineering, so that was good. Then we started looking at it. We made two changes within the systems, so we had to wait on some different materials. And then we had to start working around the schedule that we had for 801. So it's, it's, they're getting ready to break ground on it. It's, it's going to happen. It's just that we're trying to be, not to hamper too much there in that one activity because it's a busy place. So we're trying to look at all kinds of traffic control and everything for that one area.
So will there be a lot of disruption on the beach?
So we're going to have one-way traffic there for a little bit, only in between Barbie and, because I, whatever it is. But it'll only be during certain times. They're going to do the construction on 801, backside, then frontside, and then street. So they should have three different things. The rental properties, they've already worked out with the rental properties. They won't cross the driveway until they can have one section open, so the driveway can still be open on part of the structure, and just to make sure that we can accommodate the people. And that was one reason why we hadn't put the yellow bumpers in front of the 801, because we'd be diverting those people and giving them a placard saying they can park across the street.
Speaking of the rental property, has Coco Cabana or Ruby's expressed any concerns of any magnitude?
The paid parking, the reimbursement process that we're using, or the vouchers, we'll have to address that next year. It's, it's an expense. It's coming right out of our pockets. And it's not getting any cheaper because as the summer goes on, more people are in there every day. So the pier, I think we have that one sort of worked out. That's, that's easy for us to maintain. You buy a daily pass and you get a $10 voucher. The coffee shop's not bad either. You spend X number of dollars, you get a $5 voucher, one hour park. The Cabana or Coco is the one where people are going in, trying to spend the minimum amount so they can get a voucher. And then they can park that day, and then they can park another day. You know, so the people, people are figuring out ways to go around things. So we're going to have to figure that program out. And we may figure it out differently during the season, but it's something we are glad to address.
But the management over there hasn't said, "Man, this is hurting my business," or anything.
They, it's, it's not hurting their business. It only hurts their business when they don't have the vouchers and they hand out the card saying, "Here's the WW Auto Parking." And Jim and Em are, you know, honoring that when they send it to them. But we're just going to keep the vouchers flowing. But no, the, it's getting worked out, but it, it's a cost. It's a lost revenue.
Thank you.
Did Mr. Kelly, I think, had to remind them, "Don't give one out after 5 o'clock."
Yeah.
I think there was a few going out after 5.
It's not an all-day event.
Yeah.
It's for parking after 5 o'clock. Same way at the pier. If somebody comes in, buys a pass after 5, we don't give them, no. Yeah. Do you want to talk about any other fund? Are you wore out?
Wore out.
Let me give him his cheat sheet. So those are basically everything that we've, we have. We're not totally done yet. Three or four years ago, I can't remember the exact year, we paid off these buildings. We paid off all the nice brickwork that we had.
Fire stations and the police in this building.
So the council has been having about 1.5 million dollars that they can look at projects and be able to figure out where they would like to spend these dollars. So we're back to that point again. It is time for council's 1.5 million dollars to be able to discuss and figure out if you want to put it toward the 9th Street walkway, because we couldn't fund both of them last year, so we did 20th. If you want to put money toward paving, greenways, EOC, artwork, whatever you people would like to do. The other thing we still have is outside agency funding for councilmen to make the considerations on that. And that's sort of where we are, unless you have questions about what we've presented.
I'll speak first and say that I know everybody has, has thoughts and wishes and needs, but I sure would like to see the paving get brought up to date quicker. That's not the one I thought you were going to say, Bill. No, I, the rec, the rec center is, is on my heart, but people that live on streets that aren't paved, that's closer to my heart.
I tend to agree. Believe it or not, I agree with Bill.
Thank you, ma'am. Please record, please record that.
You're not typing, Lisa.
Thank you.
It'll be preserved in video. Got it.
I don't mean to put you all on the spot or anything like that, but last year's budget cycle, we got to the same point, and this is where we are.
What is staff's recommendation? Or do you have one?
Well, yes, we do.
Of course you do.
But it's really y'all's choice. It's just things that y'all have talked about. And the, Mr. Martin's been talking about the greenways and things like that. We put money in for sidewalks. We're getting some state funds to help us at the red lights. And we've talked about it, and we've talked about it, but we've never put any money toward it. We'd like to put the greenway or whatever we would like to call it for right this moment from 46th Street down to the rec center to tie the community together. So they'd have something on access on both sides of the roads. We'd be tied into the commercial sidewalk and those kind of things. Art, you talk about art. There's no funds in there for art. Whatever we'd like to do, that, we'd like to put the little cutouts where you go take your pictures or whatever it's called, selfie, selfie stations or what, I don't know, I don't know the right words these days. Those kind of things, or some art in Town Hall or art in town. Maybe some buildings that we could paint murals on or whatever, everything that y'all discussed for that, to try to clean things up. We have an emergency operations center that needs to be done. We're in this building, and we don't have no fallout shelters. We all run to where we feel safe. So it, it needs to have some kind of EOC center. The county has talked about helping us with that, partnering with that, so we can use some of the building with them to 11, hopefully, you know, allow access to everybody at that point. Paving, you got rec center. We all know the rec center is not going to be built this year, or community building, whatever y'all decide on right this moment. But we could put monies in there for engineering costs or architectural designs or those kind of things. And those are sort of the top, sort of the top ones that y'all have discussed. But there, there's smaller ones, larger ones, those kind of things to be looking at.
And some of those we can pursue grants for.
We can always seek a grant, but if you don't get the grant, then you've got to pay for it. So if you agree that you're going to do it, then you've got to be able to agree to pay it. And if you get a grant, we're good. But those are the kind of things, we'd all like to be able to clean up the alleyways that Mr. Martin's talked about a few times.
Right.
So we got the economic development person coming, and we got Matt's planner assistant or planner one downstairs that'd be working on those. And there's nothing, no money in there really for a plan or something for commercial revitalization. But it is something for all y'all to consider.
Would it be feasible to not make that decision? Put that money in reserve until the economic development person comes in and says, you know, blah, blah, blah?
Well, in a nutshell, as we always have, you have your 1.5 million dollars. We say we brought to you a balanced budget. At the end of it, there's still about a million dollars that's not spent. And those funds will be put into reserve funds to do exactly what you just said. The concept could be, you know, you put a small amount of dollars for that, and if it comes true, then you would do, but you would have funds available to be able to do that with. But those funds, if it wasn't used, it would just go to general fund balance.
Well, it seems to me that rather than transfer, if, if we have projects that we consider to be of high value, importance, we ought to move forward on at least some of those. I, I would start by saying that, given the fact that we're going to continue to live in an inflationary economy, we need to set aside some inflation protection. I think we need to, to continue to focus on safety so that includes greenways and walk, sidewalks. That, to me, would be a priority. I think with respect to the rec center, we should set aside something that would be reasonable for an engineering schema. Eventually, we agreed on what we want and where we want it, we're going to need engineering and architects. And I think we ought to give some thought to giving a budget for the economic development officer to begin to look at downtown and to think about how we can improve that. That consistently comes up from residents who've never had a plan, who've never had a person. Now we have a person, hopefully we'll have a plan. I think we should assign a budget. And then lastly, the point that Bill brought up, I think, as, when we get the professional assessment back about the streets, those streets which are most critical, we should cover with PAL money plus whatever we can allocate from this fund. That'll be a fixed number. I think Councilman Kraft's point's well taken, but there are too many of those streets to cover them all in this budget. But we can identify the worst and start there. So I would support all of those set-asides because they're tangible things, they're important things, and we could, jail residents that were, were actually working on improving their life by building sidewalks, I don't know, it's common sense, beginning to think about the rec center, beginning to work on downtown, and paving the most critical streets with money beyond PAL. I don't know what that amount is. I don't know how many streets are, would be involved, but, so that would be my thought. And that would still leave you with a balance which could be transferred to emergency or free balance if you needed to.
I want to clarify the PAL bill number. I believe last week I told you all it was 305,000. It's 350,000 we anticipate getting. That's a little bit higher.
What's the balance for this year?
The balance that I'm carrying over is about 110,000.
So 350 plus 110.
So we're talking 460 right now.
At this point, yes. Not counting the money that we're anticipating this year, for this upcoming budget.
And I believe Scott-
Scott.
-had mentioned a good target number was like 700, 650, 700. So it wouldn't take much to, to get that to an optimum level that Scott recommended. I'd also remind us, and I believe it's important, last year, we wanted to make improvements to both of the Davis Canal crossovers, and we only got one done. So I think by default, the second one moves to the top of the list for this year to make sure we get it done, because those are, you know, safety concerns with the public. So in my mind, you know, anything we didn't get done last year should move to the top of the list for this year. So I see that crossover of the Davis Canal as, as an important topic. The other thing I would bring up, while we all celebrated the great success of the grand opening of the Kevin Bell Skate Park, I want to remind us that that was only Phase One, that the design that came back to us included a second phase that would further enhance the skate park and bring additional amenities and capabilities to that area, and there's room there to do that. So I'd like to understand what the cost of Phase Two for that project looks like as well, and, and see if we can try to slot that in somewhere.
Since we're citing priorities, I'd like to throw my support behind the greenways, whatever you want to call it, public safety issues. I think that's, that's very important. And so that's where, where my focus would be. And I'd also like to clarify a statement you, one of you said, did you say help from the county?
Yes. So the county, I mean, we've been talking with them and Representative Miller and Senator Rabin about the EOC. They want to make sure that it's a joint working relationship, and then that would allow us to be able to access funds from the state. And that's what we've been talking with them from. Steve Stones presented it to some of his board as well, and they were in favor for discussions to start this year to, to see where we can go. But it'd be a two-story, and that's also where we would house our fire department and our police department. And the county would have an ambulance service there. And then the second floor would be some administrative offices for building inspections and zoning to take care of Williamson Track. And then the other one would be the EOC part for the storm events.
Great. Sounds good.
High comments. Now that we've gone round in a circle, in a vein for everybody to be on the same page. If, as Councilman Martin said, we came up with another 300, 350,000, paving could commence. That's a nice sign. We put off the greenways for two years. That's a needed attention. Emergency buildings, I think that can be in the future. Let's see if Williamson, once Williamson Track starts moving some ground and the needs are there and this and that. But I'd like to, I'd like to see some paving done and greenways be started. I would love to see some of these other projects get off the ground, but we've been going through a budget for five meetings now, and there's so many things that everybody wants and so many things we're going to have to say no to. But I think it's time to say, it's frustrating, and thank goodness I don't live on a street that's not paved, but I would hate to be a taxpayer and say, "You mean to tell me you're going to build an extension onto the skate park and you won't pave my street? You mean to tell me you're going to do this and you won't pave my street?" I think we need to get the streets as a first priority. But I can go both, I can split the difference.
I live on one of those streets that has not been paved, and if you're doing 20 miles an hour, which is the speed limit, it's not that bad.
Yacht drive's not that bad, but I've had people on Northeast 9th and Northeast 10th and Northwest 10th, and they've insisted I come drive down their, ride down their street. And when I do, I emphasize with them. So that's my thoughts.
Do you have an estimate for the Greenway project? Is there any attempt whatsoever to? So that's going to take some engineering expense and plans, correct, to even get that started? So we're not talking about funding the whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, the good news would potentially be that a paving contractor, because a, a greenway is essentially a five-foot asphalt trail. So there could be some opportunity to, to include that in with a paving contractor's effort. We looked at doing it in-house, and just from a economies of scale and a timing and other demands that are on staff, it would just make sense to outsource that, that work. So if you can get a paving contractor here on the ground, you know, they may be able to-
Do it all.
-to do it all while they're here, yeah. So. And to your point- And to your point, to your point, Bill, the EOC would be dependent upon getting, you know, the infrastructure's not even in place for the EOC, and we have no idea the timing on, would that infrastructure be in place by 2024, or is it 2025? So, I mean, I don't want to lose the conversation around an EOC, but at the same time, we are, we're dependent upon infrastructure being put in place in order for us to start developing the site, so.
Well, what I would suggest we do, I think we, we have a tentative number for paving per Scott's recommendation, so if we assign that $275,000 to get to what he recommended as an optimal yearly investment. We've identified several other projects. If the administration can come back and give us cost estimates, we could think about each one and their relative priority, because they're all worthy, it's a question of which is the most worthy, given limited resources. And as Councilman Kraft indicated, and I agree with him, we're just not going to be able to do everything in this budget or any other budget. So, I'd like to know what the relative costs would be, right? What's the set aside for the EDO? What's the set aside for engineering slash architectural review for the rec center? What's the set aside for greenways? And what's the set aside for the walkway? And then, we can make a choice. Right now, we're just talking concepts, there's no dollar figure attached to it, and I realize I'm asking you for a projection, but I think that'll be good enough, right? Because right now, this, this conversation's unanchored. I think this is important, and we have no idea what it would cost, right? Other than the streets where we have a number, thanks to Scott. Can the administration do that, and can revisit this?
We can, we, we had preliminary numbers for today, we can give them to you whenever you want them.
Okay. You want to share them with us, and we'll talk?
Oh, well, so, I mean, I've just been, I've just been listening to, trying to see what y'all were wanting. So, and, and so, for the Ninth Street crossover, $450,000. Paving, we had $350,000. Rec Center for Architect, Design and Engineering, we put in $100,000. Greenway, we put in $100,000, hoping we could pull off the paving contractor to do that.
How much?
Hundred thousand. I'm going to give you a total.
I can't write that down.
EOC on the mainland side, $50,000 to start some negotiations and preliminary designs, just to see what we could put on the property that we have, and, and the sort of building envelope that we could do for a two-story structure. Artwork, $50,000, and then the pump track, start engineering or design on that would be $20,000. And I had it right here on my phone. Roughly, that's $1,070,000.
When they were talking pump track earlier, there's a lot of talk about getting, the town would come up with 300,000, which the town did, and they would get business sponsors and what have you, and, and do some other due diligence that wouldn't tap into taxpayers. They who? All the, the Parks and Rec Board, the people that would come to the meetings and talk about the skate park.
Well, nobody's offered anything.
There was a fundraiser that was done during the skate park that has not been turned over to the town or to the friends of the park. Yeah.
What is that, about 110?
Ah.
Who has it?
So, with that said, I'll move this right on.
Yeah.
The pump track, the cost for that, so, so we looked at this in a two-phase thing because we wanted to make sure we got the first part in. The second part, when we designed it, or when they designed it, we asked them to be able to look, to be able to put a pump track around it. The means of aggress to get into the skate was one thing that we needed to look at. So, they said it needs to be a flat spot so people can walk by the track, or you need to put some kind of little design feature for them to be able to walk underneath the track, then get to the skate park in the middle. There's room for that. Pump track, as you know, is the racing of the bicycles or, or skateboards or whatever they'd like to take it around. We designed the skate park itself to be BMX compatible, so you've already done some of it, but that is something that could be done on-site, and it's asphalt, not concrete. So, it'll be a little bit different look, but then that would be all within, confined within the one area. But the cost-wise, we'd start the negotiation with them, and probably have the same kind of concept where you did the skate park, where they come in, they do a meeting or two to get the public's involvement, and then later during the year, maybe January, then we maybe could present something for the next year's budget. But we've got to have some monies to get started with.
There was some question about their, a pump track was even desired? And there was also discussion about amenities for that end of the park, such as bathrooms and?
Yeah, that's in the budget now.
Water, and, okay, so that's already taken care of. And from art, did we not budget 10,000 last year for art?
So, you did, and then Mike presented a plan to y'all to figure out how, and then?
We didn't act on it. So, there is 10,000 left, right?
I'm assuming it's still there, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and is that part of the 50,000 that you're, so then that would bring us to 60,000?
Well, the $10,000 you're going to lose because it's going to be at general fund, it won't be carried over because it's not assigned to a project.
So, we're going to lose that, okay.
Well, you don't lose it.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to general fund.
Do a budget amendment for those funds.
Right, okay, no, I know it's.
It's still your money.
It's still our money, yes.
So, you're at a million, two-thirds of it. I still think the EDO needs a budget for downtown revitalization. We've been talking about this for 10 years, nothing's happened, it's the same old, same old. If we're going to get serious, we're hiring a person, give her a budget. So, let's say 150, you still have almost a third of it going back to general fund reserve, and we're funding every project. I just want to ask my colleagues if, so the crossover emerges based on the cost per, as the priority, and then streets, right? And then, the others are really funding startup investigation or initial engineering. We all agree with that prioritization, because that, that's what we're saying, the dollars are speaking for us, right? Is everybody in accord with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Are you okay with that?
What, what you're saying is everything that David?
Hmm?
Outlined.
Outlined.
Is a million.
It's a million, it's, it's 1375, it's 1,375.
It, that's not the number he used, I'm sorry.
No, he gave us 1.7.
A million 70,000.
One zero.
One zero seven.
Right.
You missed your zero, Bill.
So, I added or proposed 150,000 for the EDO for downtown revitalization, we're still well under. What I'm suggesting is, as we consider approving this, if you look at the cost structure of each project, we, we are saying the most important project, and Councilman Martin made this argument, was what we didn't do last year, Ninth Street crossover?
Right.
Is $450,000. Additional paving money to get to Scott's level is 350. There's your top two priorities based on the cost, right? And the others are essentially exploratory or startups, because we're going to build a relatively small greenway for 100,000. The rec center set-aside is just for engineering slash architecture. The 50,000 for the EOC is exploratory, we don't even have the land yet, and the, the 50,000 for the pump track, continued, I guess, discussion slash engineering. And I'll remind everybody, the pump track, there's a certain amount of controversy which surrounded that, so.
Yeah.
Those would be our priorities, I'm just, I'm just asking, I want to confirm that that's what council wants to do, in that, those are the priorities, correct?
Yes, I'm, I'm good with that.
That still has some hope back there, right?
Still adding, but.
Every, every, yeah, everything together that Councilman Box just said is really 1,270,000.
Correct.
Charlie, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I just want to, you mentioned something as we were going through this about the paving and the possibility of wrapping the paving of the streets in with the asphalt. Greenway doesn't seem to go together, but that's.
Yeah, Mark mentioned that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, but I can, yeah, I can go with it, John.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Kelly, I think you have consensus of council on that distribution of funds that remainder going to reserve.
Yes, sir.
Did you get it?
Got it.
And do we add it up, do we agree on the number?
So, what, what I have is 450,000 for the Ninth Street crossover, 350,000 for the paving, 100,000 for rec center, 100,000 for greenway, 50,000 for the EOC, 50,000 for art, 20,000 to start with the pump track, and then 150,000 for revitalization of the commercial area.
I agree with those numbers, we've agreed to them, what's the total?
1,270,000.
Well, I think the paving number, though, if we, if we start with 460, which is, I believe what Hatton said we start with, and if we're, if we're going to go to Scott's recommended number of 700, that's not another 350, that's only 2, 240.
But the 350 goes a little further. We've got, we've got, we're still going to have streets not paved, so let's, let's smile at 350.
Oh, I'm just saying, if we're, if we're getting close to an uncomfortable letter by, or a uncomfortable amount by this council, if 1.2 against 1.5 all of a sudden looks a little scary because of unknowns in the future, that paving number may, may not need to be at 350, it may only need to be 2, 240, is all I'm saying.
But you, but as a reminder, there's still 1.2 million sitting there, and if something did come up, you could utilize and still not affect anything.
I, I'd like to have Scott.
If we sharpen pencils, pump track can, can be sharpened, economic development can be sharpened, EOC can be sharp, things can be sharpened, but man, I don't want to sharpen paving. When Councilman Box said 350 and the numbers fell in place, I was thinking, well, that's nice.
Well, the, and if the 350 with the paving contractor, all of a sudden, with the extra 100 for a greenway, gets them here to do the job, then, to your point, it makes sense to, to move forward at that spending level. And I, I also would like to remind everyone that the carbon reduction program that the state opened up is, it's a six-year program, so it's not, we missed the window for year one to try to get our leaf truck in as a, as a energy-efficient purchase to get reimbursed for, but that carbon reduction program includes things like streetlights and sidewalks, and so a lot of that can be applied for, for our street skate project through the commercial district as well. And they're, they're, they're looking for projects, they only had, I think, six or seven projects make it into the first round as an application that they are trying to prioritize, and they were all very small projects. The largest project that was submitted was St. James to redo all their street lighting, and that was at 400,000. So, and there's billions, billions of dollars in this state program for reimbursement, so we need to step up our game, and I'm hoping that the new economic development resource is going to get plugged into this carbon reduction program, and that we're, we should be submitting multiple, I'm, you know, five, six, seven, eight applications every year into this program to, to improve our chances.
Couldn't agree more, but let me advance this as a potential area for compromise. So, if, in fact, the street paving project is interrelated to the greenway, right? So, we really have 550,000. If we can get a contractor here, and maybe it's less than 350 on the street because we need 150 to do the greenway, if we can agree that we'll have flexibility there, let's just plug that amount in. Last year, we couldn't get a contractor to stay here, much less do any work. So, if we were to get a contractor, I would hope my colleagues would have some flexibility there, you know, if it's three, and the, those numbers need to be malleable, I don't think we can say we're going to do this amount and only this amount. I'd like to bring both projects forward, street improvement and the first greenway, right, as far as we can get it.
And we haven't, and we haven't said more than once that if we get both projects with one company, we may get more bang for the buck.
Right, and, and certainly under the direction of, of Scott. I mean, I think Scott has a solid plan going forward to keep the rotation in check for future street improvements. So, I'd be curious to see the, you know, where we, where we are now, because streets that were paved, right, have fallen way down the list, so streets that weren't paved, they weren't paved because they were rated as being pretty good shape. So, if those streets that didn't get paved were rated as being pretty good shape, I'd be curious to see how much, you know, this budget, right, how much does this budget now cover, even though the price of asphalt is, you know, probably higher than we've seen it in recent years, can we still make a significant impact, right, under Scott's direction, so?
I think we can, I, I think we have consensus, as long as everyone's willing to be flexible. The other takeaway that I have from Scott's presentation is, I'm going to put this in a politically correct way, the, the sins of the past continue, that cast a long shadow over what we're doing. Because the streets were never correctly cut, paved in the sewer project, right, it's going to take year over year over year of continued funding beyond the PAL bill to fix the streets, and then we're going to loop back to start maintenance. And, and that's, you know, that's a commitment, not just from this council, which has just made it, but it's council's future, are going to have to do that, because it's impossible to catch up in one fell swoop. And, but like it or not, that's a problem we inherited, we live with it. You know, the mistakes made 20 years ago are haunting us, I'm not even going to go into the sewer bill, the streets, right? So, what I'm saying is, what we did this year, we'll have to do next year, probably the year after that, probably the year after that, future count to finally get it right, to get to 90% or 92%, or whatever the number, it'd never be 100.
In the infamous words of Councilman Lowen Scott, prior councilman, "The gift that keeps on giving."
All right, you have your Kelly consensus, there it is.
I do. So, now we get to have your decision again, we need to go to outside agencies, and y'all make your decisions on outside agencies.
Can we take a short break, Madam Mayor? I have not looked at, where is that, is it tabbed in here?
411.
No, it's back there in the back.
Bell Room.
Okay. Let's take a break.
I looked at it this morning.
Apartment 10, 411.
Towards the front of the book.
Where's that?
We are back from break, and we're looking at the outside agency funding that's in Tab 10-411.
Madam Mayor, in the book, you'll see some asterisks besides three of them, those are the ones that submitted their audits. That was one of the things that council asked.
I don't see the asterisk.
I don't see the third one.
The Jetport.
Seabiscuit.
Seabiscuit.
I don't see a third one.
Brunswick Family Assistant. Seabiscuit and Cape Fear Jet.
All right, there's no asterisks on Brunswick Family Assistant.
Yeah, it is on ours.
So, does that mean we still provided the contribution without the audit, or?
So, last year, you went ahead and approved some of these without audits, and you said that we needed to make a requirement for these people to provide audits, so we have.
Yeah, I think there was a limit, right, there was a threshold value we assigned to it.
Correct.
So, you have that again, it's y'all's choice how you would like to lay the line.
Do you have the threshold amount we agreed on?
5,000?
Was it 5,000?
5,000.
Yeah, so that only applies to several of the requests. And I'll say what I said last year, it seems to me that it would be inappropriate and irresponsible to give money to outside agencies and not require an audit at that threshold. I, I mean, it's taxpayer funding for an external entity, they should submit an audit.
So.
And that's what we agreed to, so.
Yes, we did, and I think it was the senior center that we did a conditional approval pending an audit submission.
Well, there are only two entities that are over 5,000 here, right? So, that's, I mean, that's the issue. And one of them has submitted an audit, so. Do you remember what it was?
No, I was just going to say, was it 5,000 for their operating?
No, I was just going to say, was it 5,000 for their operating budget or 5,000 for the award amount?
I don't remember.
I thought it was $5,000 if they had more than $5,000 operating budget.
And how would we know that? By looking at this list?
It's it's in their packet.
It's in this packet, so we'd have to look that up.
Can you look back, Lisa?
Can I look back? And what am I looking for?
Okay, so I'll ask the question. What's the excess $20,000 for for Oak Island Water Rescue?
The packet's been available for all y'all to look. It's a copy of it right there beside the mayor.
It's in there.
So the mayor can either pass it around or.
Yeah, that would help. It used to be in the book.
It had to be. We provided one group of information, and the next year, somebody wanted additional information, so we tried to make it available for everybody and.
Okay.
Yes. The audit was asked for if the unless the organization's operating budget was less than $5,000.
It only applies to two entities. One of them submitted an audit. That's the airport. So now we're basically down to water rescue.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
If I recall, last year, Water Rescue asked for a significant increase, which we denied, and we kept them at the current.
4115.
So did we make that contribution with no audit? Is that what I'm seeing here?
And I'm seeing here they don't do an audit. They don't have an audit.
They don't.
On their application. One of the questions is, does your agency have an annual audit by CPA? And their answer is no. I don't feel comfortable in giving $41,000 of the taxpayers' money to an organization that doesn't have an audit.
Last year, it was gone ahead, but that's why, like I said, this year you required those agencies to have an audit.
Do we communicate that in a letter?
It should be.
So that went out with an application.
The Water Rescue manager's here. Let's ask him what the story is.
I agree.
Pete, in your application, it says you ought to are not sending in a applicant, uh, audit.
Correct. When he went to get estimates for an audit, it was going to cost us $5,000 to get an audit done for our organization. So, well, that's a quarter of what we were got budgeted last year. It's like, you want us to spend a quarter of the money that we're getting from you for an audit? When we get there, we have to submit quarterly for the county. Even though they only give us 9%, they ought they get a an audit sort of form that Mr. Hatton signs off on, that we are doing due diligence with all our money. So in essence, we're getting an audit, but it's not a CPA audit. The county follows every penny that we do with with both our funds, from the town and the county.
And our our financial guy, Mr. Hatton, sees that each quarter.
I sign the front page, but I don't get copies of invoices or anything like that.
Do you have an audit done of any kind?
We have.
Whether by CPA or a financial person?
Well, we have financial people on our auxiliary. Jean was did the audits for the generals when they transferred command at Fort Bragg, and that was her background. And so when I took over as chief, she went through everything. We got a new treasurer. The books were a mess at that time. You know, there wasn't checks and balances, which we initiated. We all have to get double signed off, has to get approval from the board. And Myrta, which was on the Friends of the Parks, is our treasurer, and she's very does due diligence with what we do with our funds.
Who's your treasurer?
Myrta Gonzalez.
Well, rather than get stalled here, let me ask Mr. Hatton a question. So if the sure and certain knowledge that public dollars are being spent by outside agencies in the appropriate manner, the gold standard is an audit.
Yes, sir.
But short of that, if you had access to their books, and not you per se, but our CFO had access, would that be sufficient for you to say, yes, I can warrant that these funds were spent appropriately? Because it sounds like you're not seeing the detail.
No, I do not.
I'm not comfortable if you're not seeing detail. Would you be comfortable if you saw the detail, if they voluntarily gave it to you? Which I assume you would, right?
Mm-hmm.
Your quarterly reports that you give to the county.
Yeah, there's three or four pages. I mean, they she submits everything, and I'm glad I don't have to do them. Let's put it that way.
If you got that, Mr. Hatton, that would be, you think, informative?
Of course, I couldn't certify it as an audit. I would probably it would be a review.
And I did that for the Methodist Church for several years. They did not require CPA. They required an audit done by a financial person. And one of the first things I said on the report was, I am not a CPA, but I have this and this and this, and did their audits for them. So, you know, I I would be okay. I'm not sure I'd be okay with $41,000, but I would be okay with a whatever amount council sees fit if you were if the reports were available to you. My only question is, how are other agencies able to get a CPA to do an audit and you're not? I mean, I don't.
Well, the only others are Seabiscuit and the airport.
Seabiscuit also.
Yeah, Seabiscuit and the airport.
I don't want to put words in councilwoman Bell's mouth, but have have you sought someone doing a pro bono audit for you, given how extraordinary your service is to the community? There isn't a CPA in this. No one is willing to.
At the time when we looked, they weren't nobody was doing a pro bono. Because it was going to take it was estimates were about $5,000.
I would be surprised to find somebody that would certify the books pro bono, just due to the liability.
Yeah.
Okay.
Our, just to clarify, our language says for any contribution that exceeds $5,000, we require a CPA audit to that for that agency. So it's our contribution that kicks in the audit requirement, not their operating budget.
So the question is whether we're willing to bend on that at all. The county accepts the quarterly reports.
I'm I'm in favor of of what we've been kicking around. If if the Water Rescue would give the quarterly reports, let Mr. Hatton take a look at it. Contingent on Mr. Hatton saying the vague amount of information he got, nothing alarming, or it seemed okay.
I'm not. I'm I'm not okay with that. It's very specific in what we decided last year, and we let it all slide last year. If you're asking for $41,000, $5,000 is not. I mean, we were very specific last year.
To answer your question, Bill, I don't think I'd feel comfortable doing it as a licensed CPA because I'm going to go look at the books and say, yep, they're all good, and then we'll come back and write them a check.
Yeah.
I understand. I understand.
Conflict of interest.
Well, that leaves us in the position of reducing whatever request they make by $5,000 for that we're paying for the audit. And do we want to do that? So we have a bit of a conundrum here.
Well, as I recall, last year, and I think it was the senior center, we gave them money pending submission of an audit.
But we did the same thing with them last year.
Exactly. I don't know whether that was ever submitted.
So what what we're what we're discussing is that when we set policy, do we also have the have the ability to not follow that policy for certain agencies? So.
Point taken.
While you have Pete up here, can you ask him to go ahead and tell you what the extra dollars were this year, so he can. Sorry, Pete.
Well, if you didn't see the letter that I sent in, we have between what we got from Oak Island and Brunswick County, it only accounted for 40% of our operating budget. Last year, we were called out 83 times. We responded with an average of 10 members per call, provided approximately 1,600 man-hours of service. We saved six individuals from death or permanent disability. There's a breakdown that was attached. The our funding request for '23-'24 will only cover 53% of our operating budget. So our fundraising will need not only to cover the rest of the operating budget, but any capital budget items we will need. But not limited to radios, the county systems being upgraded. We need to upgrade our radios for an estimated cost of $50,000 over the next three years. Our drone, which we deploy on almost every incident, will need to be upgraded for an estimated cost of $16,000. We have a 2005 truck used for pulling the surfboat will need to be replaced for an estimated cost of $50,000, and this is just for a used vehicle. Again, these I think the request is more than reasonable considering the scope of the services we provide for both our citizens and visitors. Please note that these team members not only potentially risk their lives when answering calls, but are also tasked with attending training and trying to raise funds in our own time. That's it in a nutshell. I mean, we have a five-year plan, too, and over the next five years, with the cost of the radios, trucks, and any other potentials, we're talking looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars for everything. So we're not asking for a lot, in my consideration. If you work out previous years, they've given monies, extra monies, and it was averaging. I mean, I don't have the numbers for them, so I'm not going to spout it, but the average cost per call that we're doing now would be about the same as when they actually got more monies years previous for less number of call volume. So we're not trying to be exorbitant, and if you want to audit, we'll try to find an audit. But then you're taking you're actually paying $5,000 for an audit. That's what you're doing when you're asking for a CPA audit. So if you want to do that, that's up to you. That's fine. I can think of better ways of using the money. So, I mean, if the town's doing it, they can come and look at our books anytime they want. I don't care. We're totally open because we're not going to lose our 501(c)(3) status either, because we have to be honest about it. So that's that's where I'm putting it on. And we didn't know that last year, when we submitted, we added for the $5,000 because in addition, because that's what the audit was going to cost. So it got down. So it's like, apparently, you didn't want the audit because you didn't give me the extra monies that the audit was going to cost.
As Councilwoman Bell said, we we have a policy. And do we deviate away from our policy when the situation sounds meritable? You just said, and I'm just I'm just looking for a way to say to say yes. If if the council were to come up with the money, would you come up with the audit?
If that's what we have to do to get these monies, I guess that's what we're going to have to do. I'm I'm still saying, I think $5,000 can buy us two new radios. I mean, we don't get the 6, 7,000, $8 Motorola's the county's getting. I mean, we're trying to do our due diligence. So, I mean, if you want to spend $5,000 for an audit, that's up to you guys. I mean.
What do you have to supply the state to maintain your 501(c)(3)?
Just regular. There's nothing, really. Not a whole lot. Unless you hit certain thresholds, it's it's actually we're quite simple in terms of what we do for our 501(c)(3). Myrta takes care of all that, so.
Well, let's look at it from the other side. I think what Councilman Kraft said is is true. You provide an extraordinary service, and you're a volunteer organization. And I get your sense of priorities. Please hear ours. We are fiduciaries of the taxpayers. Every dollar we spend is audited, is accounted for. That's the standard, period, end of story. There are no dollars that are expended that are not auditable in our organization. And that's as it should be. So if the funding request is going to be automatically reduced because you need an audit, I I don't see a way around that, and I don't want to deviate from what we've said as a standard. We only have two organizations we give a lot of money to. One's already complied. They have an audit. You need an audit, from where I'm sitting. I love what you do, but I'm I'm not going to be a steward of taxpayer funds and not have organizations who receive them audit it. So that's that's our side of it.
Did last year, were you made aware that you needed an audit?
We had that discussion at the meeting.
Yeah. So this is not a surprise.
No.
I agree with you guys. I think it's it needs to be. If it's written in there, it's in there. Not only that, we set ourselves in more jeopardy because we write it in there and then don't follow it. That puts us on the line.
Yep.
So let's move on to the request, which will be subject to submission of an audit.
Thank you, Pete.
Everyone else's numbers are pretty much the same as what they were last year, except for Water Rescue.
Well, if you recall, last year, we reduced the amount that they received. So it doesn't mean they didn't ask for more.
Last year.
We did not give them the full amount that was requested.
Right. We just gave them the prior year amount.
Prior year amounts. I think all of us are in agreement that 32 trained Water Rescue people sure is an asset for the town.
It is.
And they did good work, and there's been lives saved because of their efforts. It's frustrating to be in the dilemma of of the audit situation. But if we put a caveat in there, contingent on a receiving an audit before we dispense any funds, that may catch up with that situation. And I could I could move that way, but I guess we need to figure out if we do move that way, what kind of number we're looking at.
Well, I think they clearly are submitting major equipment requests, and the chief outlined those. He needs radios, eventually needs another, I guess, a newer drone or a new drone. They need a vehicle. It would take us to funding 53% of their budget. But whatever request, well, this 41 would be 36 because they're going to pay five for an audit. I'm not going to vote for anything that isn't audited. The question is, how do we see the remaining? How do we see their equipment requests, and are we willing to fund it? And I hear you saying yes. Or I don't. I'm not sure what you're saying. Go ahead.
Another way to look at this is if this were in-house, we'd likely be spending the same amount of money, if not more, for the man-hours, for salary and benefits. Just as a perspective.
These folks are out doing fundraisers and golf golf tournaments and. and selling T-shirts and everything else, trying to raise their money. So, it's not like, give us a whole lot of money so we can go out to eat dinner. I wish we had an audit, and my thoughts are contingent on getting an audit, but I'm in favor of the number.
And what percentage, doing the math, if you've got your calculator, what percentage of our 33 million is 74,000? I mean, what are we quibbling about?
Far less than 1%.
I don't know if this calculator will do that.
Well, that's a 49% increase from what we gave them last year.
Which was reduced.
Yeah, last year, they asked for 35 or something.
What was the number?
I don't remember what they asked for last year.
What was the number you mentioned?
Uh, 74,000.
Yeah, but divided by what?
Whatever the percent is of our operating budget.
Hope I have a total.
It doesn't have to be exact. Chief, do you remember what you requested last year?
21,150.
21?
No, their initial request last year was significant.
I think it was 35.
Right, it was 35, 36. It was a pretty big number last year.
Listen, .004.
So, we're talking about, I mean, we're funding agencies that support the community at that level. I just want, trying to introduce some perspective. If what they asked for was 36, last year, we gave them 21. If, in fact, we're asking for an audit, an audit that gives us to 41.
Chief, this 41.5, that is because this year, you have some added expenses of radios and truck and what have you that won't be an annual expense.
We have our operating costs, and we have our capital costs, just like anybody else does. The capital costs are going to be the radios, the drone, the truck, and eventually, other items as they start wearing out. Some of our equipment is over 20 years old, and so we're trying to get, maintain, and upgrade it. Last year, it was 36 plus five for the audit. And so, this year, we just went with the 41 and said, okay, now if you want the audit, that's fine. I'll just, we'll just, I mean, we need the funding. We're working hard trying to get these funds and to maintain and to do the service that not only you guys want us to do, but the visitors and residents kind of have come to expect. So, we're going to do what it takes to get the funding to help our cause. So, whether it's only 36 from you and we have to do a $5,000 audit, that's up to you guys. I mean, that's, that's fine. I mean, I'll start looking. I'm going to see where Seabiscuit gets theirs done. Maybe we can tie in. I don't know. So, that's, you know, I didn't realize that Seabiscuit was getting audited, so I'm going to do the same thing.
All right, so, I guess, I'm trying to understand, Madam Mayor, what you were saying. Please correct me if I'm not interpreting it accurately. If we were to approve this request, all right, and taking it from the free balance that Mr. Kelly was talking about a minute ago, where we expended 1.2 million and there's still 300,000 left, this is a de minimis amount, if we think it's an important amount. And what they will do is they will receive the amount subject to submission of an audit, which means the effective contribution will be 36,000, not 41. That may serve both masters. I don't know. I mean, I would need to hear from my colleagues. If we think it's a valuable service, and if we're going to fund part of it, they're requesting half their budget, and we need to do that every year. We need to anticipate that. And they need to find someone who will do an audit. Period. End of story. I don't care who audits them, as long as they're CPA certified. And we can sit here and say, yes, we gave them a considerable amount of money. It's a worthy public service. They have an audit. We know the money's being expended properly. I think we could do both here, if we're of such a mind. We have the money. They'll have to get an audit. They understand that. And that effectively reduces the amount we give them for equipment.
I'm okay with the 41.5.
Is that, I'm sorry. Pardon me. That was your discussion point, correct, Madam Mayor?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
The 41.5 and contingent on an audit.
Mr. Hatton?
By CPA.
Yeah. Mr. Hatton? I'm sorry. So, what we're discussing is funding at the level requested, 41.5, but includes an audit. So, that means no funds are given to them until they produce an audit, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But I would like to clarify, I would want to see the bill from the CPA, because it could be higher, or it could be lower. I think it'd be fair to the organization.
Okay. I can support that, too.
And the only group other than them that asked for more than they received last year was senior citizens. They've asked for $600 more, so...
What I'm saying and supporting this is, if we fund it, and I think we should, we're committed to this cost, this base, cost basis, half the budget, next year and the year after. I mean, that's what we're subsidizing this service, that's run by volunteers. I'm okay with that, as long as they get an audit, all right? And as long as the numbers can be reasonably justified. They're saying they need radios. They're saying they need a vehicle. They're saying eventually they're going to need a drone. That seems like, you know, common sense, core rescue stuff that they need.
Well, we've been through the same expenses with our fire and police.
Exactly. Okay. Are you, where are you in this, Mr. Kraft?
I'm fine with it. I'm fine.
Contingent upon an audit, yes.
Contingent on the audit. I just have concerns with the amount of their budget that we would be committed to funding. I'm uncomfortable with saying that we're going to back this up year over year on a continued, long-term basis. If you recall, we restructured our lease agreement with their property to only be year to year. We didn't do a 15- or 20-year lease agreement. And I think the mayor brings up a good point. I don't know how far she was going with it, but bringing this capability in-house, you're looking at similar numbers. The advantage would be, our contract with our fire department says they will respond. If you recall, one of the big challenges we had last year with renewing their contract, they have a right of refusal. They're like, we don't, if we don't want to respond, we won't respond. And so, we had a problem, this board had a problem with that last year, I'll remind you. At least Oak Island Fire Department will respond every time, every day, with personnel. And this budget package this year does include adding a jet ski. And you heard the chief say, it's to respond to the beachfront, and they can go in the water. They have the necessary means to enter the water to save lives. So, we're taking initial steps, I believe, this year to add our own capabilities through our own fire department with a guaranteed response. So, my concern is, this year, it's 41, and now we're paying for their audit out of that 41. Next year, it's going to be, is it 41 again, with another audit? Or is it going to be 60 next year? You know, this thing's going to grow. And we have the material, right? We have new radios that we bought. We can, we're buying new trucks. We have more ability in-house to leverage economies of scale to outfit personnel, first responders, who are going to respond. So, I still have a problem with the 41.5. I'm in the minority here, and that's fine. If you guys want to move forward pending an audit, but I'm just letting you know that this thing's growing to a point that it really needs to be considered more of an in-house service, in my opinion.
Let me respond to your concerns, Councilman Martin, which I think you raised a fair point. We did discuss this last year. I would amend, you know, my earlier comments to say, I can support 41 this year with an audit. Perhaps it would be best, as you suggest, not to make any long-term commitments. But I would also say that we have not debated in-housing this service or creating something other than. And that's a whole other discussion that we keep alluding to, but we never had it. And this is not the time for it. That's a long-term planning issue. How do we see the service that we provide to beach-going community? We have a current setup, which we fund. Is there something more efficient? Or, I'm not sure what you're proposing, but I'm willing to have that discussion. But I think this year, we need to fund them. We're relying on them. They donated their time. And I'm sorry they're troubled by the audit condition, but I'm not going to bend on that, because it's a matter of public trust and responsibility. But I get they need equipment, and they're going to provide service next year. If you then want to have a longer conversation about where this should be in 2027, sure. That's a perfectly legitimate question to ask. I don't know where council is on that. We haven't really discussed it. We haven't looked at it. So, point taken.
Yeah, I mean, we, well, we kind of did start putting some pieces in place, right? The jet ski was only one part of it, but we're putting people on the beach now. Remember, our fire chief said he's going to have active patrols on the beachfront, right? We're putting a UTV on the beachfront for the fire department. So, there will be an increased awareness and presence from the fire department this year on the beachfront.
I don't think that was his intent, was to replace water rescue.
Not, 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 this, not as a first step, no. But the intent is that our fire department is going to have a more significant presence on the beachfront this upcoming season. And expanded capabilities to assist people on the beachfront.
The stated interface was complementary services. They would work together. And I don't know, I don't think the jet ski was approved, right? Wasn't that held out?
It's in the budget. It's in the budget.
Okay. Well, not yet approved.
The comments that I've made are, I think the audit needs to stay in the policy that we set, not this year, every year. Not just this year, but every year.
I'd agree.
I'm okay with the 41.5 contingent on an audit by CPA. I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Bell, but I'd like to elaborate on something. This year, by all means, I want to be in agreement and go forward. When you start talking about diminishing the role of the water rescue, I think we need to talk to the fire chief and the police chief and get their feedback on the merits and the need. I don't want to tell the people of Oak Island that we've taken, that we've weakened their water rescues capabilities without doing our due diligence.
We haven't discussed that.
Yeah, we need to discuss that and talk to the police chief and the fire chief.
We need, this is a future planning discussion.
Yes.
For this year, we're going to fund them, but we have an audit requirement, which I think is sensible. And that's where we are this year.
I can vote yes.
Long-term, that's an open discussion.
I think we have consensus.
We do. And my other comment is, is if there's concern about whether or not they would be required to respond, I see that as a performance standard that can be satisfied as a matter of contract. I remember asking...
Yeah, the contract comes in front of you at the meeting two weeks.
Right. I remember asking you whether there were performance standards in the contract. So, if there's an understanding in terms of response, I see that that could be addressed as a matter of contract requirement, if that's a concern.
Well, we tried to address it last year, and we didn't get anywhere. So, I can't imagine we're going to make progress this year. So, I think their position's going to be, they're going to continue to maintain a right of refusal to provide service because they are managed by volunteers. He can't guarantee that if there's a need, that he can staff it because of the nature of their operating model. And that's what we heard last year. So, I can't imagine that that position's going to change this year when that contract comes in front of us in a couple of weeks. So, therein lies my concern, is we need people in positions that we know can respond and save lives, because that's their first position in the community. That's, that is what they are here to do. And that is our first responders that are under the town's ownership and management. So, that's my concern. And yes, the fire chief did say that he has a good relationship with water rescue. He collaborates with them. But he did also say that he sees putting people on the beach from the fire department and getting a jet ski as just being able to respond even faster and being more present on the beachfront to aid people in the water. So, in my mind, that's a step in a direction, as a first responder, to be closer to the need of the public and be, have a greater presence in front of the public. So, I fully support the fire department's budget this year to add the people to the beach and the jet ski. I'm all in on that, just so y'all are aware when we get to that point.
Don't disagree.
Well, we're, go back to what Mr. Box said. What we're discussing here now is what we're going to do with this.
This year.
This year, right here.
That's correct.
The discussion, the discussion of the role of the water rescue and so forth, that's for the discussion we're going to have later, correct?
Yes.
For $21,500 last year, we got 83 responses.
Look, we, right now, we have a complementary service model, assuming the budget passes, which I believe it will unanimously. And we have augmented our response. That's where it stands. Anything beyond that is a discussion for next year and the year after, and the year after. And the only tension here, you know, and it's just, it's, it's part of the way we see the world as fiduciaries, and they see the world as humanitarian volunteers who intervene, and they want to spend every dollar they get on equipment. But we can't do that. We've reached a compromise for this year. We'll have complementary services. We'll take up the question at our next retreat. How's that? Everybody comfortable with that?
Again, just confirming, we have consensus at 41.5 pending an audit.
We do.
That, a certified audit that would be presented to Ms. Hat. Are there any other line items for agency funding that we need to discuss?
I'm fine with them.
No, they're all the same, and the airport submitted an audit. I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with all, every one of them.
Then I think we're done with this part of the budget.
Yes, ma'am. We got it written down. So, now, your new number is 1,344,200.
One more time.
When you add your outside agencies to your number.
A minor, less than 1% change. Anything else, Mr. Kelly? Do we need to discuss additional meanings?
We're comfortable with what y'all have done, as long as y'all are comfortable with what y'all have done. Nothing really changed in the budget that's in your book in front of you right this moment. Your outside agencies funding is right there. The only thing we'll add in is the appropriate dollars into the appropriate funds for transfers and transfers out, or the numbers that we talked about a minute ago. Those pages will change in your budget, but the number will be that number I just gave you. Other than that, that's it.
So, to summarize.
Can we have a budget?
Town's budget, that is, if not at true neutral, approaching it within decimal points, maintaining the same five-cent sand tax. There are some departmental changes for equipment and personnel, which we've discussed. It seems sensible. And the only additional cost is going to be the $3.50 charge. is going to be the $3.50 charge for collection of yard debris. Is that correct? And that will appear on the water bill.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else I missed in that summary?
I like that summary.
Okay.
But we do need to meet one more time to bring all this full circle, don't we?
So, if you want to have another workshop for y'all to discuss things, it's totally up to y'all. We don't need one, unless you want one. The next thing that you'll have is a budget presented to you. It won't be at the May 9 meeting, but it'll be probably the Wednesday or Tuesday after that. I'll know a date there, because the next week you get planning board.
That same week?
No, it'll be the week after. You get a planning board on that Thursday, don't you?
Right. The 15th will be that Wednesday, and the 14th, the Tuesday.
So, if you could look at your calendars and see if it'd be either the Tuesday or Wednesday of the next week.
No, I'm comfortable. What will we discuss in the next meeting?
Sign off on it.
I don't have, I don't have anything else for you, too.
I don't want to have a meeting to have a meeting. I mean...
Just to have a meeting.
Is there something that we need to discuss?
No, the next thing, we just need to present the budget. And if you're good with what we got, we can possibly have it ready Tuesday night. There's a lot on the agenda for Tuesday night, but the budget presentation is just the explanation of basically what we just gave.
What you just said. But you'll do that in June, not May.
We present the budget to the public, and make it really available to the public.
And then take public comment.
And then you take public comment at the June meeting, which I think you've moved to the 20th, or something like that. So, we can have, we can probably have something ready for you for Tuesday night.
Which Tuesday are we talking about?
You're talking about the regular council meeting.
Okay, that's in May.
May 9.
Okay.
Is that the right date? May 9.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
And then we would approve the budget on the 20th.
Correct.
So, we don't need another work session?
The 20th?
June 20.
We're not having June 13.
Because I'm out of town.
Y'all had rescheduled it to June 20.
Okay. Simple, Carl. I'm glad you reminded me of that.
Yeah.
But are there any outstanding issues we need to discuss? I'm not adverse to having a meeting, but I don't see a need, right? We're agreed.
I don't see a need.
You gave us, you pretty much gave us consensus on the numbers we read out loud. We'll stick those into the appropriate line items.
I'm confused again. What?
And the budget's still balanced.
Regular meetings for May, and the 20th.
Okay. Can we go home now?
Make your motion.
June, we move the meeting from the second Tuesday to the 13th.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I got true green in my front yard. I gotta go home.
Motion passed.
I have cruise money to make. I got to go.
Thank you, David, David.
Everyone, thank you, David and David.
Thank you all.